Welcome, everyone. I am not Mayor Kelly Gertz. Kelly's under the weather this evening, so he asked me to stand in for him tonight, which is my pleasure to do. Agendas are online, for those of you watching at home, at ACCGov.com, and there are agendas on the table outside for folks. And if you need a parking pass, there's also a form out there for you to get a parking pass while you attend this meeting. Please silence your phones. Avita?
I got it.
The way the meeting will go tonight, well, first of all, before we do roll call, I want to welcome Professor Jennifer Rice's Odyssey class here today. I don't think we're going to have anything real exciting for you to watch tonight, but you never know. But you're certainly glad you're here, and you're welcome back at any time. All right, so let's do the roll call. Madam Clerk?
Davenport?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Link?
Here.
Wright?
President.
Denson?
Here.
Edwards?
President.
Harrod?
Thornton?
Here.
Handy?
Here.
Thank you. So to sort of preview how this is going to go tonight, as far as public input, we'll have three opportunities for public input. But the first one will be coming up here in a moment regarding the consent agenda, which is items 1 through 10 on the Agenda printout. The second one will be citizen input for all business, which is items 11 through 15, actually 11 through 16. And then we will have public input on each of the zoning items, one at a time. And then at the end of the meeting, you're free to speak for three minutes about anything you want that's relevant to the Clark County government, of course. You have three minutes to speak, and you can watch this red light system up here, which will be green until two and a half minutes, and then at three minutes, it will go red. Okay. So are there any, oh, first of all, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move to approve.
That's minutes of February the 5th, and February the 19th, and February the 27th.
Only two approvals.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right. Any written communications, Madam Clerk?
Well, entering to the record, we have notification of right-of-way acceptance for portions of Pine Log Road and Esteady McLung Road.
Thank you. Now is an opportunity for citizens to speak on the consent agenda, which is items 1 through 10. You get three minutes. Anyone?
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Sidney Bakas, PO Box 174 Athens-Clark County, and I'm here to speak on Agenda Item 1 for the expansion, funding of the expansion of the Athens-Clark County dump. And I have some additional documents that I have sent to you electronically by email, and I'm also going to put a copy into the record. The first additional document is a color photo of the actual parcel of land for the expansion that is discussed in the document that is attached as support material for that agenda. This is from the Oglethorpe County Tax Assessor's Office. The parcel in question is shown outlined in blue, this rectangular shape here. The blue line that runs north and south is identified in the legend as a large river or stream. The second attachment in my document, Attachment B, is an enlargement that actually comes from a staff document that was originally presented back in 2006 or 2007 to support the expansion. This shows a more extensive extent of the stream, and you can see multiple branches that actually go through the existing Athens-Clark County dump, the fork of which, of one, has been excavated and turned into a leachate stormwater pond in this area here. And the next attachment, C, shows an enlargement of this area in three different figures, showing a location of the historic African-American Billups Grove Church in relationship to an area that was expanded in the dump to compost sewage sludge, in addition to where the stream for the proposed expansion merges with the branch of the stream that was excavated for the pond. And that continues, that actually is identified in that document as Big Creek, which is a tributary to the Oconee River, and that flows south under 78 and into the Oconee River. So my concern, my other concerns are that not only was this important stream not identified, but also the impacts to the environment were omitted because they, the staff document said that it was consistent with the healthy, livable, sustainable Athens-Clark County commitments, which also weren't furnished. So I have additional information in here, but I'm requesting that you vote no on this expansion and pull it from the agenda.
Thank you.
So I'll put this into the record, and please note that when it was collated, they reversed the order of Attachment A and B.
Thank you, Dr. Bakas. Anyone else wish to speak to items 1 through 10?
Claire Bolton, 255 Oglethorpe Terrace, Athens, Georgia. You'll have to tell me if this is relevant enough to speak on, but I wanted to keep bringing up the issue of regarding items 6 and 7, so I see this is, these are both funding requests related to the Greenway and Firefly projects. I want to continue bringing up the issue of installing overlay planning districts around those projects in the historically Black East Athens neighborhood. Overlay zoning districts can be used to both, to incentivize both preserving existing affordable housing and further building more affordable housing. So this is really necessary in that neighborhood, given that these are, it will increasingly become a desirable place to live. We already see a lot of gentrification in that part of town, and so I would love to see y'all take proactive measures to continue to protect and preserve affordable housing around the Greenway and Firefly Trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll bring it behind the rail, as they say. Does anyone wish to remove any item on the, any Commissioner wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Ms. Commissioner Link?
Number one, please.
Number one. Mr. Parker?
Number one.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. So now we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, we have some ordinances to read.
Can you read the ordinances?
Yes, please.
Number two, an ordinance to amend the FY 2019 operating and capital budget for Athens-Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide grant funding, if awarded, from the Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council's Stop Violence Against Women Act continuation grant program for expenses related to four investigator positions and a records technician directly supporting efforts to prevent and reduce crimes of violence against women and for other purposes. Number three is an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to parking restrictions on Kendine Street and for other purposes. Number four, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to parking restrictions on Milletage Avenue Extension and for other purposes. Number five, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to parking restrictions in Cars Hill Neighborhood, Georgia Drive, China Street, Trilby Street, Kent Street, and South Poplar Street and for other purposes. Also, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to left-turn traffic prohibition on Oconee Street and for other purposes. Number 11, an ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia, with respect to always stop control at the intersection of Barber Street and Boulevard and for other purposes. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Bearman. All right, now we'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Roll call vote.
Wright?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Handy?
Yes.
Davenport?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
You know.
All right, we proved it was a consent, didn't we?
We proved, we picked a mayor, wrong mayor protest.
I could have told you that.
Did you say "raw"?
All right, we'll take citizen input on all business now, which are items 11 through 15 on the agenda.
My name's Armin Chapo. I live at 210 Milletage Height, Athens, Georgia. I'm a retired police chief. I'm also a retired federal law enforcement officer. I wish to address the issue of the school resource officer. That program began in Griffin, Georgia in 1991, '92. With a discussion between the principal of the high school and myself, the high school board desired to annex the high school in the city. I wanted to know how many calls the sheriff had out there. So I checked the logs and checked with the sheriff's department. It averaged two calls a day for every day of the school year. At that time, Griffin was the only high school in Spalding County. I decided it would be worth my money, put an officer out there full-time. And so that's what we did. There was no training for an SRO at that time. We went to post council, a couple of us that believed in the thing, and asked them to set up a program at Forsyth. And for a couple of years, the principal at Griffin High School, who later became the superintendent up at Commerce, Larry White, and I taught the first hour about the interworking relationship between the school system, police department, and the city. There were actually two contracts made up. One between the school board and the city detailing who paid for what, when, and where. The other contract was between the principal, chief of police, and the school resource officer, detailing exactly what his duties were and what his duties were not. And that carried on very well. We published an article in '93 in School Safety Magazine detailing the two contracts, and we had over 4,000 inquiries afterwards. And a number of school systems started immediately. Dublin comes to mind, Clayton County comes to mind. The interest on the part of the media when the first school resource officer was deployed was primarily on the fact that you had an officer carrying a gun walking around the school building. They came back six months later and were amazed to see that that wasn't an issue. The issue was the student talking to the school resource officer to mediate their differences so they didn't get in a fight at school and wind up in the court system. And one of the examples I was given by the officer, Donald Britt, who's now a chief down at West Point, Georgia, was two guys just found out they were dating the same girl. They were going to fight. What should they do? His advice was, both of you, go find somebody else. School resource officers are highly trained to deal with kids. They are trained to prevent violence in schools. That's the whole purpose of the program. And they are required under Georgia law, they have a minimum of 40 hours of training in a number of subjects. They also are required, for best practice, that anyone that's appointed a school resource officer has to go through the court. So I would urge you to continue the system that's been going on in Athens-Clark County. It's something of value. I think you'll find your new police chief, I think you'll find the schools' police chief. The principals of the schools that have resource officers are delighted to have them and want to continue the program. In Griffin-Spalding, they've gone from high schools to middle schools to elementary schools in some cases, the cases where kids are prone to violence. And it seems, and to prove my point, there were over 300 calls for service. First year the school resource officer was deployed, for the entire year, there were 12. So it was dramatic decrease. There has not been a fatality in a school system in the United States where a school resource officer was present, except for one, and that was a recent shooting in Florida. And I won't get into why he didn't do what he was supposed to. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
We'll see. But thank you, Mr. Chapo, and thank you for your public service.
You're welcome.
Anyone else to speak through items 11 through 16?
My name is Pete Thorne. I've been a resident of Clark County since 1992, and since 1997, I'm the leaseholder across College Avenue there at 289, Smoker's Den. It's been brought to my attention that our lease was recently pulled aside, although my connection, the government doesn't know exactly why, so forgive me if I'm a little broad on this. You know, I've had that spot since '97, and the only person that's been there before that, you know, there was not even electric, plumbing, nothing. We did all the improvements there, and I've enjoyed a great relationship with the county ever since. I've been commended numerous times for, you know, never being late on rent, and everything's been really great there. Ms. Hellmy told me she thinks the issue might be that earlier this year, I actually got notice that someone had been visiting the parking enforcement and mentioned that they smelled smoke, cigarette smoke, coming from next door. And truth be told, I've actually never smoked a cigarette in my life, and I do empathize with them about that. And over the last 20 years, I have thought a time or two, if anyone ever were to complain, you know, what would I do about it? And I've looked into some ideas, and actually, I got a letter from Mr. Fluck early this year about that complaint. And so I've even been looking harder into some options, and I've sent Ms. Angel Hellmy an email with some options. Some are more simple, other ones require putting ventilation, you know, into the, into the building itself, and that would certainly need approval. But if that happens to be the issue, I'd like anyone to know that it's definitely being addressed, and I'm fairly certain that it won't be a problem after this. Like I say, in 20 years of being there, I've never heard of any complaint, and I kind of did expect them. In fact, the only person I know of that complained was me, actually, because I still don't love the smell of cigarette. But, so anyways, I do empathize with it, and I would promise you that I would be taking care of it right away if that happens to be the issue. If there's anything else, I'd, you know, be glad to address that as well. But that's the only thing I can imagine, and, you know, hopefully that will address, allay any fears anyone might have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pete. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Rochelle. I live at 325 South Harris Street, and I wanted to talk about number 12, the school resource officers. And I talked about this last time, and I think it's great to have anecdotal data about how great these officers are, and that we don't have anecdotal data about them being violent or having altercations with students, as what I've heard. But I would really love to see data on what type of activities they do with students. Like, is, are the stories, are these stories that are mostly positive, kind of floating to the surface, and some of the other more negative stories kind of being buried, is my question? And I would like, and I think that we need to know that. We need to know the relationship that these officers are having, and I think 40 hours of training isn't really enough. I think that they need to have resources in the community so that they can connect students with the resources they need if they're having problems. That's more than a pat on the shoulder or like, a nice story to tell them, like, not to get into a fight, because kids have real problems, and those can come out in school as like, episodes that a police officer might intervene in. And if they don't have those resources to connect people, then we're doing a disservice, and they're not really resource officers in that moment, they're police officers. And so I would like to suggest that these six resource officers should go through more than these 40 hours of training and get de-escalation training, meet with public health officials, go through violence prevention training that happens in the city through these other organizations, and have real resources to help students, and use that as a pilot to understand what that type of training would do for our police force. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll come behind the rail, and we will discuss item number one, the landfill construction budget amendment. Anyone? Melissa?
Yeah, so our landfill is about to run out of space, within the next few months, actually. This expansion has been planned for quite some time. I think it's, what, about 70 acres or so? I have a handful of questions for the manager, just to, so the public knows what's going on here, and I do also share some of the concerns about the contamination of the stream. My first question is, what is the projected life of the expansion?
I believe it's about eight and a half years.
So do we have a plan moving forward in eight years? Eight years comes real quick.
Sure. Well, the, this, this expansion is not the entire 79 acres that was purchased by Oglethorpe. It's only a small subset of it. There are future expansions that will occur within that 79 acres.
Okay. What is this immediate expansion acreage?
I'd have to, I'd have to look that up.
Or even like, what portion of that 70 something?
If you look on, on the agenda, there's a map attached.
Yeah.
And it's Phase 1.
Okay, I see that. Thank you. So there's about, there's five phases?
Yeah, the total, I'm told, the total lifespan, if you will, of the entire area is about 40 or 50 years.
And regarding the biosolids use, we had a work session back in the fall that presented several different new projects for our wastewater treatment plants on treating biosolids, de-watering them, and so they wouldn't be used at the landfill anymore. Can you give a quick rundown of those projects for the public? From what I understand, the goal is to greatly reduce the amount of biosolids going to our landfill, either as coverage and through our composting operations. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. There are several different ways of mitigating those biosolids with dryers and that type of thing that are currently being investigated. But I will tell you that since March of last year, no biosolids are being landfilled at our landfill. There are some biosolids being composted at the compost facility, along with food scraps and leaf and limb. In FY 18, composted about 200 tons of food scraps, 3,000 tons of biosolids, and about 7,200 tons of leaf and limb debris.
And from what I understand, the nutrients that are in those biosolids actually promote the decomposition process, so you need that green matter, which could be food scraps or biosolids. But the concern is all the other stuff that's in those biosolids. Do you have any information on the contamination of that stream? I had not seen this other map showing that there are actually two streams that come to form that little pond. Do you have any information on, on the streams, and are there any EPA or reports on the, any contamination of that stream?
Not that I'm aware of. We follow all state of Georgia Blue Book stormwater regulations and all code requirements as regards to, you know, developing sites and streams and that, that nature. Just like any development in Athens-Clark County, there has to be some stormwater feature to that, to capture the stormwater for both the quantity and equality purpose.
So are those, when I, when I look on a regular map, it just shows one single stream coming away from the area, but this map that Dr. Bakas gave us shows two additional streams coming together to form that other stream. Are those two additional streams perhaps not perennial streams and possibly runoff streams?
It could be. I'm not as familiar with, with that particular map, but regardless of whatever stream transits the property, we're following all state and federal regulations.
Um, could, is there any more information available about the nature of those streams, possibly? Could you, is there any, anywhere we could turn to find out more information on whether or not those are perennial streams? If there's some contamination that might be going into the stream that leads into Big Creek that goes into the Oconee River?
I'm certain there is. I can't, I can't produce that on the spot.
No, not on the spot, but, I mean, if, if we could have some follow-up, that would be, that would be nice. I think I had one more. Oh, yeah, the biosolids and the composting. If we were to increase the amount of food scraps, green material in our composting, we could possibly eliminate the biosolids from our composting.
Sure. What's limiting us on composting really is, is the amount of leaf and limb material. We use 100% of it in composting. If we had more leaf and limb material, and we have talked to some private companies about how to partner with that, and we're still investigating that. But yes, I think food scraps, as we try to achieve the Mayor and Commissioner's goal of waste reduction, that's really sort of the next frontier for us.
Yeah. That was my next concern, is, you know, since we have a clear picture of how much land we have left in this landfill and, you know, a timeline, I mean, it really looks like this is probably only about 30 or so years worth of landfill space left, and we've gone into Oglethorpe County, we're basically buying, bought this land from Oglethorpe County. I hope that we're going to, about to get real, real serious about waste reduction. We have a great recycling program, but I'm, I am all for eliminating things like Styrofoam and upping our food composting so we can, you know, make sure that this big fat chunk of land is going to last as long as possible.
Thank you, Commissioner Link.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think Patrick might have had some questions.
Now you, Commissioner Link asked, asked, and Blaine answered all the questions I was going to ask.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a remark, just to, for, say that the green stuff is a leaf and limb. So that's what the green stuff is in compost.
There's green and brown.
Right. Brown is food and biosolids.
There's the dry brown stuff and the green food stuff. I don't know. I, that's what I learned in my Master Gardener composting class.
Oh, did you? Okay.
Well, I will, I'm sorry.
Tim?
You can go, if you had some remarks.
I was just going to offer that we are converting the open compost windows, which you're used to seeing, to aerated static piles. It produces compost faster on less space, creating fewer odors. So we are transitioning to a better, better form of composting.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up for, you know, people watching at home and people in the audience here who haven't pulled up this exact item, but I think a lot of times, not just here in Athens, but everywhere, we have a bit of an idea that we throw, we throw our trash in the can, truck picks it up, takes it away, we're done with it. It's not our problem anymore. And really, this, this has a great cost. It's not just the environmental cost that we're talking about here. This is costing us $4.8 million to do this expansion for eight and a half years. That is a lot of money, and a lot of money that I would much rather be spending in other ways if we can actually reduce how much waste we're putting in the first place, which Commissioner Link brought up. Like, that has to be our end goal, and that's going to take just really buy-in by the entire community. We have to reduce, and it's going to keep on costing us more and more money, and it's going to keep on costing us, cost to our environment. So I really want people to look, look into this, like, when, instead of complaining about when we roll out more composting features or recycling stuff, I, sometimes I hear people saying, like, how much is that costing us? It's not costing us nearly as much as it is for us to be throwing this much stuff into a landfill.
Thank you. Commissioner Handy?
Well, I was going to defer to Commissioner Gordon. She had her hand up first.
Oh, you were helping me?
Yeah, I was. But I, I've also got my hand up.
Oh, okay. I thought you was helping me. My, I know back in the 90s, this was a huge issue, I guess before Mr. Williamson. This was a huge issue in the 90s. The families on Dunlap Road was dealing with a lot of health issues that was linked to the landfill. So instead of, I don't want to say fixing the problem, looks like we're just expanding it, you know? I would, I, I don't know what I'm going to vote on as far as this, at this, because I know we got to do something, but there really needs to be a, a plan, you know, not just expand. We need a plan after expansion. So I know Dr. Bakas mentioned Billups Grove, and so my question really is to Commissioner Davenport, has this been a conversation recently? Now, I know what happened years ago, but Billups Grove and the families out there, have you had any re- have you had any recent conversation? It affects all of Athens, but it definitely affects that neighborhood, which is predominantly African-American.
Thank you, Commissioner Thornton. In the past year alone, I had two of my cousins die of cancer. In the past 20 years, I've had six die of cancer. I have been on a campaign to test the water, to test the soil of that, and my home church is Billups Grove Baptist Church, and all my cousins and first cousins live off of Dunlap Road. It's family property down there. But, um, yes, we are continuing to have those conversations with EPD and the county.
Thank you.
So, follow-up. So my next question is, on this ordinance, do I have to wait until the vote to know how you're going to vote?
I'm sorry, that's
That's illegal?
That's out of order.
But, but I do have a question. But I do want to know about the folk that are in that community, and maybe that's going to kind of put me where I'm going to be.
Commissioner Hamby?
Sure. And I'm going to ask the manager, Williams, if he could outline the many meetings that we're having with, with Billups Grove Church and the, and some of the membership out there within the past couple of years.
Well, if, if I may, I know that I have read what Commissioner Thornton was, was referring to, and, you know, any type of contamination, there were monitoring wells put into place to make sure that, you know, the, the main form this would take is not an odor, it's not a particulate matter, it's going to be something in the groundwater. That's been being monitored. And all the residents within 500 foot of the landfill property were converted over to public water and off the wells. And I think the church is also on public water as well. And we tested all domestic wells up to 1,000 feet from the landfill, just to make sure that there weren't any health concerns, that any, you know, both for the safety of the citizens as well as for the, you know, the government as well. So I think all those things went on in the past to make sure that there were no other issues. I do know that there was some environmental cleanup done, but it was done on one of the properties acquired that I think was a auto mechanic, and they just kind of dumped everything out into the, you know, the yard. And so that was kind of our biggest cleanup issue. So, you know, beyond that, you know, there were 10 parcels of land bought along with that auto mechanic to try to, you know, control all the land that, that might have had any groundwater contamination, and the wells were put outside that perimeter. And since then, you know, we, I don't think we've had any issues with the testing, and, you know, when EPD comes with their comprehensive compliance inspections in the last five years, we've, we've had a 94.5%, you know, compliance rate. So, you know, we can certainly dig deeper and answer any questions that you have, but I feel pretty confident from what I'm told that we, there's not this environmental disaster at the landfill.
So, so I, and, and, and I just want to, I just want to be clear then, so yours, your, to your knowledge, that the problems that was really horrendous back in, I guess it was the 90s, you have worked to improve or fix it, and you're willing to go deeper to see what else we can do? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, now, when you say the problems that were horrendous, I don't know exactly what you're talking about.
The ones you said that you read about.
But any type of groundwater contamination has been monitored to make sure that it doesn't go any further. Because what happened is back before, subtitle D, landfills, that's a regulation, you had unlined landfills. And so, you know, you, water can go through there and go through the groundwater, and so that's what we've been monitoring after all this time. Anything that's new, including this one, has a liner like that.
Okay.
And there's, leachates pumped out and treated, you know, or, or it's brought back and recirculated. So anything that we're doing now should not at all be contributing to any further environmental contamination.
Commissioner Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'm going to make a motion to approve option one, A, B, and C.
I'll second that.
All right. Let's do a roll call vote, Jim. Yes, sir. An ordinance, thank you.
An ordinance to amend the FY 2019 annual operating and capital budget for Athens Clark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding for the solid waste department for construction of the landfill expansion and for other purposes.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I have one other thing to add.
Yes, sir.
So the mayor and commission, along with the finance director, comprise the solid waste authority. So this is the way this works. Y'all are approving the seeking of debt, the solid waste, y'all will have to convene in a meeting to approve the RFP for debt, and then the debt approval ultimately will come back through the mayor and commission.
Thank you. Thank you for that hallucination, elucidation, enlightenment.
Either one works.
Madam Clerk, would you mind calling the roll for a vote?
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Parker?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Denson?
Yes.
Edwards?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no.
All right, the matter passes. Thank you. Next item of business is number 11, the Barber Street at Boulevard proposed always stop. Who would like to discuss? This is in your district, isn't it, Commissioner Link?
Yeah. There are a lot of happy folks in the Boulevard and Barber Street area who are real happy to see that they're getting a three-way stop sign there. It's, it's pretty scary. You've got cars shooting up over the hill on Barber Street. It's real hard to make a left turn or even a right turn there. And it's also been really dangerous for pedestrians. There's a lot of pedestrian traffic right there, you know, and you have the Boulevard Woods Park. So this is going to make a lot of people happy, and I move that we accept it.
I second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All who's in favor?
Say it was, Parker.
All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say aye. Thank you. The next item is the school resource officer agreement for the 2019-2020 academic year. Who would like to kick this off?
Commissioner Parker? Or I'll go first. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Protem. Is that how that?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr., Mr., don't get too, don't get too used to that, okay?
Or your honor will do.
So, Commissioner Wright and I drafted a CDO to amend some of the language in this agenda item, to do what I feel is reflect a more respectful attitude towards the communities that are being served by these officers. I personally believe that we have the creativity, bold ideas, and steadfastness within our community to eventually have in Athens where policing in our schools and indeed policing in our communities at large may no longer be necessary. And we have to be very steadfast and creative and bold in order to take steps towards ensuring that we are addressing the symptoms, what manifests as symptoms, as crimes, as well as the roots of those crimes. Things like investing in mental health resources at schools, continually investing in mentoring opportunities for youth, that right now, a program like this is sort of having to be the umbrella for. And I also think that along the way, as we work towards that ultimate goal, we have to ensure that as a government, we're talking about our communities in ways that acknowledge the histories, the resources and relationships that make our communities strong, and not problem areas or bad areas that require bording over. So Commissioner Wright and I have drafted a CDO that addresses this language bit that I think is important, sort of shifting the way we look at policing, the way we look at our communities, and I will read that now. The ACC PD SRO program benefits both Athens Clark County School District and ACC Gov. SROs are first and foremost law officer, law enforcement officers. The SROs are familiar with the respective campuses, geography, campuses, geography, facility layouts, and school hallway traffic flows, patterns of school day schedules and extracurricular activities. SROs serve an important role within the school community as serving as an onsite resource for staff, faculty, and parents, interactions and observations with students in their school social circles, improves our SRO's work with our teens, and keeps SROs current on the social realities of the students they serve. SROs work in coordination with Athens Clark County School District Police, School District Police Department, officers, and security personnel to maintain safety associated with assigned schools. At all times, SROs remain sworn officers of the Athens Clark County Police Department. So that changes to capture that they understand both the physical geographies of these, of these, of these schools, as well as the social geographies that create or, or support the creation of instances where they might need to come in and intervene. And with that being said, I motion that we approve the Commission-Fined Option written by Commissioner Wright and myself.
I'll second that, and I appreciate the history lesson that we received from the gentleman who came to the podium with the beginnings of this program and spoke to things about it I didn't realize, but, so I'll second it, and I hope you guys support it.
Any other? Vida?
I'm, I'm real, I'm glad about the, the language, because I think language is what makes a difference in how you say it. I, I'd need to say that I think, I want to go on record saying that I think the school resource officers are, are vital. I, I think they're vital just from my 16 years on the school board and what I've seen. Can it get better? That's what I think I heard in your language. So I support it, and I hope that we have a way to evaluate and monitor so when, when people come from the community, we know the impact that it has had. I think one of the things that we don't, whether it's anecdotal or, or personal examples, folk just don't know what's going on. So I definitely support it. I thank Commissioner Parker and Commissioner Wright for working on the language, and I strongly support school resource officers.
Commissioner Denson?
Yes, and, and I will definitely support this CDO, but I also support the aspirations that Commissioner Parker brings up. I mean, myself, I was, I remember whenever the school resource officers were ruled out whenever I was in high school, and, you know, students, schools, and the situations that they all, everyone faces now have, have definitely changed quite a bit since when we implemented this, you know, in 1996. And I'm sure that the curriculum, the trainings have evolved somewhat, but I would really like us to be able to, to take some fresh eyes at this and to really analyze what the SROs are doing there. Is this the best way for us to move forward? What is the curriculum? Is this, is this the best, are these the best tools? And I think a fantastic body to be doing this is, and it's exciting, because we actually have some members here in the audience of the Future Youth Council that we'll be putting in place. Hopefully, I know the manager's office met with them before this meeting, but I think that shows the, the perfect kind of role, why we need something like the Youth Council with the county government to review these kind of systems, these kind of, that we have in place, and really give us feedback from the student's perspective of, of what, what they think is the best way for us to be moving forward. So I, I do support this, but I, I also hope that we can be bold and creative in looking at how we can move forward with this program in the future.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I want, Protem. I, I wanted to add some facts, some information in that I left out my first go-around that might be interesting to some folks. Mr. Williams was very awesome in providing us with some data on the number of arrests that took place in, by SRO officers in 2018, as was kind of brought up at the last meeting. And of about 6,000 students served, because we're looking at high school, middle school, high school, it looks like there's only 27 arrests made in 2018, which is not a bad number. Obviously, we can always improve, but for those who may be listening or watching and had questions about that lingering, those are some of the numbers. One question I did have pertaining to the training that we, that they receive, as Commissioner Denson brought up, Manager Williams is also great in providing us some of the, an overview of some of the training that SRO officers receive, which was very helpful to me. I noticed that the officer, however, that made the majority of the arrests 2018, the overwhelming majority of them, their training record is not included in the document, so I just wanted to see if this was comprehensive.
Sure.
I'm looking at the training overview. Training overview. So I've got six officers. And as far as the, you know, talking about the hours of training, I just wanted to, I want to get to your question, Commissioner. Yeah, yeah. Go ahead and address anything that you But, yeah, I would like to share for the public that, you know, these are some of our most highly trained officers for, for obvious reasons that have been stated by several folks. And the, there's six officers, the, the one with the least amount of training has almost 1,000 hours, and the one with the most has almost 1,700 hours. So I want to dispel the notion that they just simply go to 40 hours of training. And when we say training, it's not the same training every year. I mean, they, there's all sorts of things, from interpersonal communications, to active shooters, to cultural diversity, to crisis management, to autism and de-escalation. I mean, it's just a wide variety of training that these folks get because necessarily they're working with our children, so. So these officers whose training is, background is overviewed in this document, these are the ones that are going into 2019's, that will be funded in 2018. I'm trying to figure out why this particular officer that made almost 20 of the, 15 of the arrests last year is not listed in this document. Okay. But it can be something that could be returned to if it's not something that, I just want people to also be able, to have access to information if they are interested since we're trying to promote transparency and Absolutely. I, I can look into that, and I'll give you that information. Okay. I'll give it all to you. Great, great, great. And if anyone watching or in the audience wants to take a look at this, I haven't. We all haven't, so, yeah. I think that was, I think that was everything. I guess one last thing I'd like to add that, is that these folks are trained to do a variety of tasks, you know, crisis intervention, interpersonal communication, community-oriented policing, and to come back to something I touched upon in my initial remarks, these could be functions within the school that could be taken on by folks whose, whose institutions don't have histories of, of racialized bias, racial bias, racial violence, and things like that. So that is why, while I do support the work that these folks are doing, I under, I also understand why people are nonetheless apprehensive about fully trusting in the institution or the role, but that we should work on all aspects of that.
Well, let me take the liberty of adding one more thing, and that is, there was a question about why don't we add more counselors? And what I discovered last week, which wasn't a surprise really, is Advantage Behavioral has 13 certified professional counselors in our schools, mental health counselors. So that's a resource that the SRO has, the counselors have, the students have, that we, we may not have been aware of, and a program that they, they, they want to grow if they had the funding to do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Is my time up?
Your time is never up.
Aw, don't say that. You'll regret it later.
I know.
So, well, last thing I wanted to add to, to respond to a comment made by, I think it was Ms. Berry, about the data that we do have, with these anecdotes about good things that happen. We also have anecdotes on infractions that people are, in, you know, in the end are arrested for. But the reality is, it is really hard for us to gather qualitative data on how things are working or, and not, and it's not typically something that we have done a great deal of, outside of like focus groups and like user groups and things like that. And so, final plug, if there was a way for us to kind of compile some of the successes as well as some of the, some of the qualitative data around things that go wrong, it might help us better evaluate what, you know, how, what the, what future evolutions of this role look like.
Sounds like a good conversation for Dr. Means and the new police chief. Commissioner Wright?
Yeah, I found the information that I wanted to share. The content of the email that came with the detailed attachments, 22 arrests were made by these school district police officers. Only five arrests were made by the SROs. So it might be that the school district and our Board of Education, that we all have representatives, we need to reach out to them and maybe make sure that they're getting the same of the training that we're getting. Again, there's different roles that they, that they have there as well, so it's very complicated, and there are more police officers at, on the campuses because they do have their own police department. So I think that our summary looks pretty good.
It makes sense now. I understand.
All right. Oh, there's one more.
And, and, and actually, Commissioner Wright said what I was going to say, but it goes back to the conversations that we're having about our role, but I really want us to be serious about collaborating with the school district. I really think some of the questions that were asked, the school district should be having those same questions when they're coming up with their strategic plan, the concerns we're hearing here. When they're coming up with their strategic plan, the concerns we're hearing here should also be part of their conversation. So I'm going to keep adding that we really need to have these serious conversations with all our collaborative partners, and I am excited about Chief Spruill, because even though there are people that are fearful or have some intimidation about police, and rightly so, I hope that under this, his leadership, that we can change the image of police officers here in Clark County. I think there's a lot to be done, but I believe that we hired someone who will also not just work to keep the status quo, but change the image of police officers. They should not be, my granddaughter should not be afraid of a policeman. My grandson should not be afraid of a police person. They serve a role, and I think that when you get, you know, when something happens, it just stains everybody. But that's just the way life is, and I hope that we are, we're going to work to change the image of police policing here, and I hope that we're going to work with our school district on these common issues.
Thank you. This was a very good discussion, some good takeaways here, so. I think I'll just, if anyone's finished, I'll just call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, thank you. We'll move on to item 13, which is a lease agreement with Smokers Den for the retail space at 289 College Avenue. Thank you, guys, for coming. Come back any time. You're always welcome.
I make a motion, we approve Smokers Den lease.
We have a motion to approve the Smokers Den lease.
That would be option 1, A and B.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes. Yes, Mr. Williams.
And Bill, check me on this. So the CDO was for a change in the language.
Yes.
But was not actually for the approval of the contract. And so I want to distinguish between the action taken.
Yes.
So that.
So we need to say like.
Substitute that for the two that's in the whole.
Or the, the, um, the actual recommendations, if you don't disagree, just to be.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We got lost in.
So the CDO was just on the language change, I think, and not necessarily contract approval.
Yeah. I think it's, it wouldn't hurt to go ahead and re-vote. Let's do that. Do we have a vote for the SRO contract approval? A motion?
Let's see.
With the CDO language?
With the commission-defined option substituted in for number two under facts and issues. That's how we should have presented.
Is that a motion?
Our motion.
That's a motion, yes, that we're going to approve the contract.
I'm trying to get back to the contract. If there's some options there.
That's right. I see what you're saying. That was just in the description. So that could move forward with the agenda item, that would be substituted in the agenda item for the record.
Yeah, the record will reflect the language change.
Things of the CDO. And that we're, and that we're approving option 1, A and B.
That's it.
And you want to second that?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Point of order, thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Sidewalk gap project, Southview Drive, Baxter Street, and North Chase Street, bid award. Whose district is this in?
It's mine.
And mine. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead. You've got the commission.
Yeah, well, this is for several sidewalks, and Chase Street was, it was supposed to be one of them, but there was, we have an uncooperative rental property owner who owns four parcels along this stretch of Chase Street from Nana Hala to Boulevard, which is a heavily traveled stretch. There's a little goat path in the dirt there, really trafficky street, and it's been on this gap list for a long time. So I put together a CDO so that staff can move forward to condemn for right-of-way the easements on those properties, just the few feet of land at the curb that we need to build a proper sidewalk for this neighborhood. So I just want to go, well, do you want to go ahead and talk about Southview too? I know Southview needs a sidewalk. I drove down it today.
Yeah, well, so what we would want to do is, so we don't do what we did with the SRO, is we want to say it so that we're covering what we need done, and. And I think we did that with A and B.
Yeah, the CDO is written to approve all, all three of the projects that are on the, on the list. Do you want to talk about Southview?
I'm ready to approve it, and then you wanted to do, it looks like you want to substitute for B. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion for A.
And I'll move that we approve options 1, A, B, and C, and authorize staff to initiate the process to condemn for right-of-way easement on property located at 850, 860, 870, and 886 North Chase Street, and ask staff to acquire the appraisals and the resolutions and submit an agenda report at a future meeting so we can move forward with that Chase Street portion as well.
So Commissioner Wright, you made a motion. Do you wish to withdraw it?
We're merging.
So.
So I withdraw my motion, because I think she captured it.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second it, and I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I think it's unfortunate that we have to continue to spend time and effort for staff to go through what we need to do to get permission to make it better, safer in front of these properties, and that the property owner who doesn't take really good use of the property was asking us to start doing things about taking care of that property, and this does, in the right-of-way, in the area that we need for a sidewalk. But I'm glad it's not going to interfere with progress on the other ones, and that we can move forward with them, and then as time permits, that staff can get what we need for those Chase Street ones.
Do we have a motion, any sec, and a second? Any other discussion? All those.
Mayor Pro Tem, just to clarify, that was the CDO and the, all the options that were in the.
Yes. A, B, and C.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Passes. Now for our favorite. Downtown Transportation Improvement Project, T-Sploß 2018, project number nine, Clayton Street, Public Art Recommendation. Commissioner Parker.
Thank you. So, I was really delighted to hear that the artist who is interested in doing this project is also interested in perhaps having a public workshop component or something that meets some of the discussion we were having last time around regarding local artists being involved somehow. I understand that it's not always within the reach of local artists to take on really big projects like these, but in collaboration with an artist from, coming in from outside to share some of their resources and skills and ideas, they may then be apprenticed to get to the point where more of our public art locally can be done locally. So with that being said, I would like to motion to move forward with the Clayton Street Public Art Project.
I'll second, and I have a comment or two. We had a pretty lengthy conversation about this project and our public art project, our public art program in general, and I, you know, we did hear from our Cultural Affairs Commission, which they do a tremendous amount of work. These are huge, and there are a lot of these projects coming up with all our T-Sploß programs, and, but yeah, from what I understand, that was always the intention, was that this project would include some extensive public presentation and outreach to local artists. I think that, you know, when we do have these large-scale projects that are awarded to outside professionals, that's a great opportunity to have an educational program for our local artists, to get them up to the point where they could possibly be awarded these large-scale projects someday. And I hope that we do keep in mind that there is always a place for smaller-scaled projects, projects that are accessible to many of our local artists. So I just want to add that little, little caveat that, you know, I do hope that we can always keep in mind that we need to make room for our local artists and for smaller-scale artists, so they can get their foot in the door and prove that they can do a smaller public art project, so maybe the next time they can be considered for the larger one. So I'll second the approval.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes, I was hoping that the manager, it's not exactly the art project, but it is Clayton Street, if you could help give the community some information that we have gotten before getting to this point regarding why there's a need to remove the trees in general, as well as the tree replacement plan that we have spoken of and learned about getting us to this, the Clayton Street project topic.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I think also, it might be good if I give a brief update on where we are as a status of the project, because there was a lot of activity, and now we seem to have stopped a bit. So Clayton Street, it's, we want to be very mindful of the merchants and the activity downtown and not be disruptive to that, and the mayor and commissioner approve sort of a staged process of getting to the end of this project. You know, this is a 100-plus-year-old downtown or more. There's a lot of stuff underground that we can't see. The bids that came in were impossibly high the last time we bid it out because of all the uncertainty, and so our own crews went ahead and did a pre-dig down to go, to dig the trench that the stormwater pipe was going to go into to understand where the conflicts were, and as you've been reported to, there are over 65 utility conflicts that were identified. And we're trying to work through those now. The trench was filled back up with material and covered up for the time being. Once those conflicts are resolved, then our crews can efficiently go through there very quickly with the least amount of disruption to put the stormwater pipe in. With regards to the trees, really, I mean, there's nobody that's going to tell you that these trees aren't beautiful and really contribute to the downtown. These are Darlington oaks, for the most part. They are, they've exceeded their life expectancy or are in decline. Even if we didn't have this construction project, there was going to be selective removal of some of these trees. They've grown, outgrown the above-grade planter boxes, you know, there's some uneven sidewalks around it, which is a little bit of a hazard. The new trees will be in at-grade tree wells as part of the new streetscape. There, there's been a lot of questions about, well, what are we going back with? And there's a variety of species to put in the large-corner trees, but avalanche laurel oaks is what is going to go back, and those, I did a little research on it after staff shared that with me, and those are very urban-tolerant. And, and these will be six-inch caliber trees, which are pretty big trees to plant. They will be 18 feet tall, and they should grow about two or three feet a year. So that's, that's what I know about the trees, and, and that, you know, as opposed to having, over time, larger trees and then gaps going back, you know, when we go all the way through, we'll put trees in, and hopefully 10 or 15 years from now, you know, we'll be in a state that folks will be proud that the trees are back down there.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Commissioner.
I just want to clarify one thing about this particular action item. So with the public art recommendation, it's my understanding that that, once all the process played out, that that will come back to us for a final, final approval. Is that right?
Yes, sir, and I'm glad you pointed it out, Commissioner Hamby, because this is a little bit unusual. Normally, the project concept, and it goes straight to preliminary plans, but because the artist had shared some initial ideas, but we really didn't understand exactly how it would integrate into the built environment.
Right.
The Cultural Arts Affairs Commission agreed to go back and mature the concept and then come back to you so that you know exactly what you're voting on.
Right.
And so they will enter into a contract, perhaps, with the artist to do a little more design work, and then they'll come back to you and the public for the review.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so this is the first step in public art recommendation, so, just to be clear. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We need a motion for suspension of the rules.
So moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to item 16, which is a possible settlement of pending litigation, title only. Bill, I'm going to ask you to do what needs to be said about this.
Okay. Before you, there is a settlement agreement in general release, and it applies to a lawsuit filed by Mr. Taylor Salters against the Unified Government, former Chief Freeman, and Mr. Williams, and other representatives of the Police Department. Athens Clark County's council has negotiated with Mr. Salters' council, and that settlement agreement is before you.
Thank you. Assuming this passes tonight, the mayor will issue a statement, a press release, within the next couple of days, explaining a little, a little more about it and what our intention is going forward in general, not specifically about this lawsuit, but in general, about what we've learned from it and what we intend to do about it. Is there any discussion?
Was this, given that this agenda item is still not online, does the public know at all what's going on, or like, how could they have known, like, today or prior to today, if they would like to come see here and be witness to this vote taking place?
We were, excuse me, we were waiting to get the signed document from the Mr. Salters, so we're not able to put it up until we got it, which just happened yesterday.
Thus the suspension of the rules.
I make a motion that we accept a settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. It's to a roll call vote. Please, ma'am.
Yes.
Denson?
No.
Edwards?
Yes.
Thornton?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Davenport?
No.
Parker?
I've seen.
Link?
Yes.
Five yes, two no.
So that passes.
I'm sorry, six.
Six yes.
One, two, three, four, five. Did I miss somebody?
And there was, wait.
There was one abstention.
There was abstention.
Okay. Okay. Bob to, one abstention.
Okay. So, Bill, that's passing. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we're going into items from the Clark County Planning Commission. Let me tell you about the procedure, it's a little different than what we've done before. So all persons supporting or opposing a proposed rezoning may take either one or two different opportunities to address the mayor and commission. Proponents shall first present their 10-minute argument in support of the proposed rezoning if they have signed up for it, and opponents shall then present 10 minutes' argument in opposition if they have signed up for their 10 minutes. Neither side will be required to use all their 10 minutes. Either side may allocate its 10 minutes among number of speakers. All persons wishing to speak longer than three minutes during the 10-minute argument must have registered their intent to do so with the clerk of commission previous to the, to the meeting coming to order. In the event that all persons wishing to speak longer than three minutes as part of one side's 10-minute argument are not able to agree how that side's 10-minute argument period shall be allocated, they shall inform the mayor of their disagreement before either side begins their 10-minute argument. Act's supporters and opponents of the proposed rezoning concluded their 10-minute arguments. Any person who has not yet spoken either for or against the proposed rezoning shall be allowed to address us for no longer than three minutes.
Why did you make that sound so complicated?
It's like it's his voice.
Those who signed up may speak for 10 minutes. Those who didn't may speak for three minutes.
There you go.
All right. Just trying to do my job up here. All right, so, Mr. Griffin, I believe you are here to talk to us about item 17, which is a request from Herman Fields and Jennifer McCarthy-Bray for rezoning from AR to RS 25 on 1.79 acres at 1715 and 17 Beaver Dam Road, which is what you were supposed to say, wasn't it? But there you go.
Well, generally, at this meeting, I don't make a presentation to you. We just call for public comment and.
Oh, that's right. That's right. There are no presentations. So, public comment on number 17, which is what I just said. Anybody want to speak for 10 minutes that's signed up? There's no one signed up.
Somebody wants to sign.
Does anyone want to speak for three minutes? Okay, so we'll bring it behind the rail. Whose district is this in?
This is Patrick's. It is just a simple, straight rezon from a family. I motion that we all approve.
Second.
On, yes, we have an ordinance, I'm sorry.
An ordinance to amend the code of Athens Clark County, Georgia with respect to rezoning a parcel of land comprising approximately 1.79 acres located at 715 and 717 Beaver Dam Road from AR to RS 25 and for other purposes.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, number 18, which is a request of Freedom from Bondage Inc. for a special use in RM1 Mixed Density Residential on .38 acres known as 190, 192, 194 Highland Park Drive. The proposed use is halfway houses. Any discussion? Whose district is this?
Andy's district.
Commissioner. Andy's not here.
I make a motion.
Of course.
Is there someone to speak to this? Yes.
It's unraveling.
It's unraveling.
Good evening.
I'm Chris Church, 194 Highland Park Drive. I'm the Program Director of Freedom from Bondage. Thank you for your time and efforts and your contribution to our community. I am a person in long-term sobriety, and what that means to me is, as of March 20th, it will be 11 years since I found it necessary to take a drink. Recovering from substance abuse disorder happens in communities and neighborhoods where people live, where they have access to support systems. In our area, there are over 100 AA and NA meetings each week. We are also fortunate to have two recovery community organizations, which are funded by the Georgia Council on Substance Abuse and the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. These organizations offer valuable services and peer support to those in recovery. The opposite of addiction is connection. At Freedom from Bondage, our goal is to support the recovering woman as she builds a foundation in recovery, develops and enhances social skills, re-enters the workforce, and moves toward becoming a more productive member of the community at large. Over the years, we've had many success stories. Because of the services FFB offers, women have not only grown personally, mended relationships, and established long-term sobriety, women are building lives beyond their greatest expectations. I am one of those. To make sustainable change, we as a community must reduce stigma and rally to support those individuals seeking recovery. At this time, recovery is not only possible, it is an expectation. People like me, who have lived experience, are speaking out in order to help reduce the discrimination and stigma that comes with addiction. We also hope to show that recovery is possible and that others can get well too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. All right, anyone else in the public speaking? Okay, so, yes. No. For item 18.
Yes, sir. My name is Dennis Holmes, and I reside 1965 Wannabe Road Lot 2. And, hey, I was up in here about four weeks ago. And a lot of y'all, y'all remember when I was up in here. And I came back today because I feel that it was imperative that I do come back. You know, hey, I know every last one of y'all that's looking directly at me, know that I'm not telling, that when I wrote.
Sir, are you, are you speaking of item number 18, which is a special use permit for a halfway house?
No, I'm not.
You're out of order, sir. Please sit down.
Sorry.
You'll, you'll be able to speak after we get through with our business.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
Hey, I thought that, uh...
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. All right, we'll bring it behind the rail. Commissioner Wright, I believe you decided you were going to represent...
Yeah, I make a motion that we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation. A second.
An ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to special use approval of halfway houses in the RM1 district for three parcels of land located at 190, 192, and 194 Highland Park Drive, comprising approximately 0.38 acres in, in total and for other purposes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Number 19, rename 200 block of South Franklin Street as Jenny L. Maddox Street. Who would like to talk about this?
I would.
Yes, you would.
Public input.
Public input.
Public input. I bet there's a family member here.
We're going to fire you.
I know. I quit.
Any public input?
No public input. All right.
Jesus, I bet you're...
So it's up to you.
I really, I definitely am going to motion that we rename South Franklin Street as Jenny L. Maddox Street. Ms. Maddox was a leader in this community. She was a mentor in this community. And I think, again, we are trying to preserve legacy. We always talk about legacy. I think this is a, a great opportunity, and I think there's some, and I think it's a step forward to what we could identify people, contributions of folk in the future. I think this sets a precedence and rightly earned and rightly deserved. I understand that the family had been working on this for a long time, even before I even thought about coming on this commission. So it's a great honor for me to speak to this today.
Thank you.
So I would like to make a motion that we name the 200 block of South Franklin Street as Jenny L. Maddox Street.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? An ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the Code of Athens-Clark County, Georgia with respect to changing the name of 200 block of South Franklin Street to Jenny L. Maddox Street and for other purposes.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right. Now it's time for citizen input about any matter concerning the Athens-Clark County government that you wish to speak of. So, three minutes, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Paula Lerniak. I live in Oglethorpe County, unfortunately. I'm not here to talk about tiny houses this month, but something else. I'm concerned about the dramatic increase in Athens-Clark County over the past two to three years of huge tractor-trailer trucks on the surface streets as well as the loop. These trucks are huge. Many look to be about five car lanes long, approximately 13 feet high, and are almost as wide as the lanes, which were originally, I'm assuming, designed to accommodate cars and small trucks. These 18-wheelers are a menace. You've probably been behind one at some point and read the notice that they make wide right-hand turns, so we should be careful not to get in their way to avoid getting hit. They not only make wide right turns, swinging left before turning to the right, they make wide left turns that we should be careful of, and basically are too wide for Athens' road designs and measurements. They can't go from a full stop, like at a traffic light, to go as quickly as passenger vehicles, causing traffic behind them to back up, and often that traffic will get caught at that traffic light for another go-around of the series of green lights. When they are in a lane, which is meant for left-hand turns from a surface road onto the loop, for example, at Lexington Road and Barnet Scholz Road heading north, one truck can take up the entire length of that access lane, slowing down and backing up traffic again. While driving on the loop or surface streets, their sheer bulk with height, width, and height can block a driver's view of street signs, speed limit signs, and other informative signs. Their height prevents vehicles behind them from seeing the status of a traffic light such that they can't know whether or not they'll be able to proceed until the tractor-trailer has cleared the intersection, which again causes backups, but can also cause accidents if the passenger vehicle drivers assume that the light is green since the tractor-trailer proceeded on a green light. There are so many reasons why these huge vehicles should be somehow restricted from the flow of traffic in Athens, including the damage they cause to the streets themselves, which citizens pay for in taxes to repair and repave streets that weren't meant for vehicles that weigh several tons. There has got to be a way to clear off streets of these behemoths. They're a menace and a nuisance and cost us tax dollars. I was recently sideswiped by a tractor-trailer on Lexington Road near Walmart. They are so wide, there is no wiggle room while driving next to them on a two-lane street. I could have been seriously injured or even killed. Fortunately, there was only cosmetic damage to my car, no damage to the truck, of course, but it left me with no vehicle for five days while it was being repaired. I don't know why there's been such a noticeable increase in these long haulers on our streets and highways. They used to be seen mostly on interstate highways until it was a moving, unless it was a moving truck, and even those weren't on the streets very long. What's changed? There's some way to limit them to only certain hours, like from 11:00 PM to 4:00 AM when traffic is light? Can Athens add fees to these trucks in order to help pay for the upkeep of the streets as well as to discourage the drivers from using Athens as their free shortcut to other cities? Will we have to wait for some traffic-related fatalities involving them in order to recognize the problems and then notice it? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, my name is Dennis Holmes. First of all, I'd like to say I'm sorry for coming to be here earlier, you know, hey, but getting back to what I was saying before, I went back and sat down. I'm not a lying individual. That's, hey, that's one thing I don't practice. I don't practice lying. Hey, now, I brought accusations against Athens-Clark County, and each and every last one of y'all, y'all can look at me because I'm looking at y'all. Hey, and I'm telling each and every last one of y'all, the accusations that I brought were true. They were true. Now, I ask y'all to give me a lie detector test. If I fail the lie detector test, you won't hear nothing there from me, no way, naught whatsoever. But if I pass the lie detector test, then, y'all say, hey, we can talk. That's all I ask of y'all. Give me a lie detector test. Let me take the lie detector test so I can prove to each and every last one of y'all, hey, I don't lie. I do not lie. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, Your Honor. My name is...
There we go.
Is Michael Smith, 147 Bryan Street. I stand with the gentleman behind me. I apologize for contributing to have been out of order earlier. Government can be confusing, so...
Yeah, we know.
So, anyway, what I wanted to briefly speak about was, first of all, congratulations, West Athens Park's land acquisition was approved by the Advisory Committee last night. Kind of surprised me, and I thought that was good. But what I wanted to talk about is, I had came and asked, inquired about the status of Audit Committee meetings a couple sessions ago back concerning SPOST, not only, not only for the intern, most notably right now for the internal operations of SPOST. From what I know, they get approximately 3% a year from SPOST. So on a $248 million SPOST, that's about $7.5 million. And then now that we have T-SPOST, I'm also wondering if we're getting a reduced rate for the administration of SPOST. I don't, I, I think right now, the, those numbers alone say, I, I think also that five county staff positions are, are funded by that, which I think is great. But we haven't had any Audit Committee meetings in several months, and I, I'm just wondering if we're having one tomorrow as scheduled and if the audit is on the agenda. So thank you so much for your time.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Sidney Bockes, PO Box 174 Athens, Georgia. And I would like to address some, another topic that I also included in my previous document, some discussion about and some documentation about. And that includes the discussion of addressing the problem of waste at the source. Commissioner Denson addressed that concern earlier, and ironically, I would like to provide some information about that. In the past, I have heard comments by the Solid Waste Director, Sukey Jansen, about problems she sees with actually composting food scraps and food waste in Athens-Clark County. And these are justifiable concerns. And they concern these plastic labels that are stuck all over food, like avocados and fruits. And all of these plastic labels or stickers are left on these food scraps, and then if you attempt to compost them, which I do, including food for my neighbors, you're left with all of these remnants of plastic in your compost. Now, in this document, which was part of the letter that I submitted, on this side, all of these are paper labels. So it's perfectly possible for all of these companies who produce plastic stick-on labels to convert to paper labels, which compost very simply. So one option would be for Athens-Clark County to consider fees to cover the cost of having to deal with the disposal of these nonessential plastic labels. Another option is to incorporate Tetra products, which they are now looking at companies, including Procter &amp; Gamble, where all of the containers that they use for all of their products actually be reusable. So that company does, still owns those containers. They collect those containers, either from the sources that sell you those products, or if you order online, they pick them up, they refill them, and they resell the products in those containers. That would eliminate a huge amount of plastic waste in Athens-Clark County. So I encourage you to consider those options to reduce the waste in Athens-Clark County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Bockes.
Hi, my name is Chris Dowd. I live at 188 Northview Drive, and I am here to talk about bird scooters. So I've just been thinking about them, and I think it would be a shame if they were banned permanently. So I think, they have so a lot of great benefits, actually. So they're zero emission, they don't do, they don't damage our roads at all, sort of like bikes in that way. They're very popular. But, and then even better than bikes, they're, they're more accessible in some ways, like there, you know, there's some conditions that can prevent people from biking. You have to be in good shape to get up some of those hills, for example. And I think they can extend the range of our transit system. So I've just been kind of thinking, so what are the major challenges with them? Well, you know, people, you know, people leave them everywhere, and they clog the sidewalks. The company didn't even try to work with our community, but I think, I think now they'll be, they'll be interested in working with us. And then I'm also concerned about the backend, like the sharing economy side of this. I think that kind of undoes a lot of the positive side of it, because like, you know, you have to get in a truck and go around town, and, you know, that burns gas, obviously. So I don't think that part is pretty clearly efficient. But I thought of a, one possible solution, I don't know. So you could put, so the, the main problem is that they, they leave them anywhere, and so I think that we should have certain, like GPS coordinates, like, I think they could be docking stations, it could be just like a sign or something that says, put your scooter here, and then feed that into the app that the company has, and just don't stop, don't let them stop the meter. You've probably already thought of this, even. Yeah, okay, great, awesome. Yeah, and so then, and then when we go fare-free on our buses, we'll have some extra time from those, from those employees who would be counting money, maybe we can have them charge the scooters. I think that would be a great idea. So, and ideally, so these docking stations, maybe they could be solar-powered, I don't know, I'm just kind of thinking, maybe, maybe for a next T-SPOST when that comes around, I'm not sure. But, um, yeah, so if you've already thought of that, I think this is a great solution. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D.
Claire Bolton, 255 Oglethorpe Terrace. I want to speak again on the upcoming SPOST decision-making that y'all will be doing. Specifically, I want to talk about the Affordable Housing Project of $44.5 million. So my understanding is that there is very, the public information about it remains very limited. I have talked to, to some of you individually to get a better sense of the project, but I think there's a big problem with transparency, and so if you agree with some of the concerns that myself and Athens for Everyone have, I would ask you to make this process transparent at every point so the public can continue to hold it accountable, especially to goals of racial and economic equity. So there are some very specific things that we wanted to ask, and sort of phrasing it like Rochelle did last month, as a people-first approach to the Affordable Housing SPOST project. So one is keeping it public and accessible. Now, the public part, we know that SPOST projects have to be public, right? So what we would like to ask, if this isn't happening already, which I kind of know it is, but to enable the Athens Housing Authority to own the project, to own the low-income units, so that HUD affordability, permanent affordability rates will apply, the, the high Athens Housing Authority waitlist will be reduced, and also that any relocation be fully funded. And we also wanted to ask to consider using the Athens-Clark County General Fund to hire at least one social worker who would ensure that all residents receive essential services needed during this process. So that's keeping it, keeping it as public and accessible as possible. And another really important point is to ensure 0% or absolutely minimal displacement. For example, if the chosen site allows, you could build a new units in phases, allowing residents who are currently living in the complex to move in first. If the site doesn't allow that, then, again, relocation should be fully funded, following what I believe are Athens Housing Authority guidelines. what I believe are Athens Housing Authority guidelines. We also think it's important that all residents should have the option to live in the new low-income units, residents of the current chosen complex. And also to ensure not just one-for-one replacement of the low-income units, but actually more than one-for-one replacement. Because if you want to increase affordable housing, then that's how to do it. Otherwise, you will just simply be replacing a stock of affordable housing, albeit making it more livable. And so, yeah, those are just a couple of the points. And another is to consider, strongly consider also implementing a community benefits agreement, which could be used not only for this project, but for future affordable housing-centered developments as well. And so the basics of a community benefits agreement is it, is it's meant to have a positive impact on the people surrounding the development, especially those living in vulnerable communities. So, for example, requiring that, oh, I'm out of time. Maybe I guess I'll try to explain that more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. You have excellent comments.
Hello again. My name's Rochelle. I live at 325 South Harris Street, and I want to talk about the same project. And I just wanted to talk about mixed-income housing and what that means. I looked back into the research that I had read, I mean, a few years ago, on some projects that happened in Atlanta, and some of the ideas that came out of this project is that, like, we shouldn't segregate and concentrate poor folks. And that's what these projects did. And while I want to be against segregation, I think that we have to be clear that by mixing people into housing that is people who are poor and people who have, who are middle income, that does not categorically do anything good for poor folks besides providing them a better unit. And we need to be thinking about how we segregate resources, capital, opportunities, good schools, and by, and that creates these spaces of poverty, not just the fact that they're concentrated in a housing development. And so to put our poverty problems into a solution like mixed-income housing, we need to be thinking about how we're going to segregate these other arenas as well.
Thank you.
My name is Yomani Scott Blackwell. I live at 870 North Chase Street. So I'll just first make this time to say that awful landlord is just as awful as you think. If people lose you, you can only imagine how he treats us, but us neither here nor there. So first, I want to say that I am disappointed with the Commission's decision to pass this settlement for Officer Salters, but not just on the decision in and of itself, but also the lack of transparency around this conversation. Moka Johnson also wanted to be here to speak on this commentary, but as we didn't know until 5:57 that it was even going to be coming up, she is not able to make it. So as Tim Denson spoke to the need for a youth council to guide you all forward in decisions pertinent around decisions that are particular to youth, for example, the SRO topic as discussed today, by the same logic, we can see the need for a civilian police accountability board that is composed primarily of individuals that are directly and disproportionately impacted by the police, particularly that they must be vested with the power to determine policies that govern the police, power in personnel decisions, and most critically, the power to hire and fire the police chief. That hiring and firing power is critical to ensuring this board has teeth. Otherwise, there will be not, there will not be an adequate incentive for officers to try and try to adjust to these measures that are being suggested. It's important that also this board is comprised particularly of individuals, as I mentioned earlier, that are disproportionately impacted. So to name these groups, previously incarcerated individuals, a good place to start would be with the Reentry Collaborative. They meet every Tuesday at 3:30 PM out of the Sparrow's Nest. It's a transition for folks that are coming out of the jail. Young people, this could potentially happen through partnership with the youth council, as is already coming into formation. Black Athenians, undocumented individuals, LGBTQIA folks, people from low-income communities. And also important to note is, as these folks are coming from marginalized communities and are thus economically disenfranchised as well, they need to be compensated for their time, and as such, should receive a stipend for their participation. It's inhumane to not pay people for their labor, as we've already discussed with the practice of unpaid prison labor here, but we certainly wouldn't want to set a precedent for treating everyone like prisoners in this community. Additionally, I'd like to emphasize the importance of eliminating cash bail and directing the police department to deprioritize arrests for marijuana possession, driving without a license, and other nonviolent crimes. Studies show that the best way to reduce recidivism is to make sure people never see the inside of a jail in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Sam Raffel. I live at 230 Spalding Circle, Athens, Georgia. I'm going to share an email from a woman named Allison Thompson, with her permission. She's a parent of a student athlete at a local high school, a soccer player, is a former varsity boys' soccer coach. I can relate to this story. She writes, "I'm writing this email in hopes to have some questions answered, as well as to rectify issues that arose on the night of Friday, February 1, 2019, so that no other student athlete endures what my daughter experienced. My daughter Hannah is a soccer player and attends North Accony High School. She was severely injured on Friday, February 1, 2019." Now, these are my words. As you know, National EMS Services, Athens-Clark Accony, kind of is a single unit sometimes. "I'm sure your records will show that there were numerous 911 calls that came in about her injury. It would have been about 7:10 PM that evening. She suffered from a tibia and fibula break, one of the most painful leg breaks you can have. It was almost a compound break as well. Her shin guard, which was broken, saved the bone from coming through the skin. I talked to people who were at that game, and they described the pain as, quote, 'brutal' pain. First responders arrived promptly, but they could do nothing for Hannah, nor did anyone get on the phone, walkie-talkie, and hurry the ambulance. Why? However, she lay in the cold, wet grass for more than 25 minutes before the ambulance Can someone tell me why? I think I can. Also, upon the ambulance pulling in, no lights were on, and it was as if they were at turtle speed. Again, why? When the two female paramedics finally approached the scene, they were clearly stunned by what they saw. You could see it in their faces. They tried several times to get an IV. Fourth time, they were successful. Myself, our athletic trainer, and two mothers that are nurses that were with me were all afraid that Hannah would go into shock. We never left the field in the ambulance until one hour after the incident happened. This is completely unacceptable. As a parent of an athlete, I'm aware that injuries can and will occur, and when 911 is called, I expect for the National EMS to do their jobs and attend to whatever emergency they have been contacted about. That was not the case on Friday, February 1, 2019. No child, no person should endure what I witnessed that night, having to tell your child over and over, "The ambulance is on its way," and we just kept waiting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor Protam, Commission, Broderick Flanagan, 215 Gressom Street. I just want to really say a quick thank you for approving the funds to support the exhibit at the Leonard House Art Center, Sitting with the Elders. It was on consent agenda last month, and this is my first opportunity to come in personally. Thank you. I know this may seem small in lieu of the entire city's budget, but for the event, it was a major support. It made the event a great success, and I appreciate that. Also, congratulations to the new commissioners. I think this is my first time addressing the new commission, so congratulations on the new commissioners, and I look forward to bringing some equity to this community and working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Broderick. Anyone else?
Hello, Commission, and Mayor Protam. My name is Erin Stacer. I live at 378 Atlanta Avenue. I just, I wasn't planning to speak, but I definitely feel a lot of concern about the settlement that was, we just heard about with Officer Salters. That was a really public event for Athens, a really important one, because it started a conversation about police and community relationships that are extremely important. And I just want to emphasize the, the need for transparency in this kind of thing. I want to know more about why we're settling with this guy. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is it it? Okay, so do we have a, oh, okay.
Okay, I also, okay, Ashley Nah, 420 Athens Avenue. I also wasn't planning on speaking, but heard about this settlement that I've been a little bit out of the loop, because I've now become a teacher at Clark County with Clark Middle School. And so quickly to speak on that, I think that the SRO is important in some ways, but I also think that people mention counselors being important. We have one counselor for about 795 students at the school, and so that counselor is often running around dealing with emergencies that if you have a crying student, you can't really tell them to go see the counselor, they just have to be put on a list, because we are so understaffed in that way. We also need more administrators, and so if we could get to the root of the problem, and I know that's more of a board decision, school board decision, but if we do have the county able to support the school district in some ways, we need more administrators as well, so focusing on those in addition to SRO. Because I think we would need less police officers at this school or resource officers if we had more ground-up infrastructure to be able to support the students in the first place. Also, in terms of Timmy Patton and Officer Salters, I think that the lack of transparency should be addressed. I'm asking for it to be addressed in a wholehearted way from the entire commission as like a document or something that's going to be released to the public, explaining the decisions that were made leading up to this point. Because if we think about this, maybe this was because y'all thought that the trial was going to go poorly for the county, and it would end up having to cost people more money. But this is also that settlement, which we don't know how much it's caught, how much that was for, or what it was for. And I tried to look on the agenda of the website for any sort of documents to give me more information, and there's nothing listed, which is a huge problem. That's going to come out of taxpayer dollars. So when you're making those decisions, as you probably already know, you are representing us, and you're also spending our money. And so we should have had some sort of say in how this was going to go down, because it doesn't just affect the county and whatever optics and other things that might be at risk there. And, yeah, so some public comment should have been taken in for this in some way, if that was legally possible. I don't know the bounds, but I am asking for an address to the public of the situation leading up to this, the conversations that happened, and some insight as to why people did vote yes or no, so that we can understand really what led to this point.
Thank you.
I just found out about this when I'm
Would you state your name and address, please?
Aaron Gregory. I live on 293 South Fennel Street or by the tree that owns itself. I just found about, out about this. Did you know that today the Georgia House approved a bill that will permit medical marijuana growing, manufacturing, testing, and distribution? 60 dispensaries would serve the state's rising number of physician-approved medical marijuana patients. I want to invite everybody up here to the Students for Sensible Drug Policy meeting tomorrow night at the library. It's six o'clock.
Thank you.
And we can talk about, you know, having some dispensaries in Athens. I want to grab, throw this, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to get laughs or anything or be theatrics. I told, I promised Melissa I was not going to be loud and theatrical about this. This does not count, I promise you. But I really need to know if I can start growing, because I need to know if, I need to renew this this year and try it again. And my landlord is asking me if I need to renew the lease, and he wants to know as quickly as possible, because I need to start planting these, these herbs real quick. All right, Mayor.
Be careful. All right, do we?
Don't blame it on Yomani also. About the criminal justice report.
The mayor doesn't have a report. He's not here.
You can make up a report.
Yes, I will speak to this. The mayor has prepared, has prepared regarding the settlement with Officer Salt, former Officer Salters, which will be released in the next couple of days in some form or another. We only reached an agreement on the settlement today?
We got it on Friday, but we just couldn't get it out after the agenda was put up.
Right, so.
So we could change the website and send it then?
I'll ask the mayor to begin to that.
I don't believe that.
And I, I, I guess, I know we, I thank you for saying that, that the mayor is going to release a statement. I think that everybody is sitting on edge, and so am I to some degree, but I think the statement, hopefully it will be enough. But I do think that we, as a community, need to be more proactive. And I don't know how, how much sooner we could have gotten it out, but I do want people to know that there is going to be something from Mayor Kelly Gertz that hopefully will help. But what do we do after this?
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to any reports from the manager.
I'll just note the acceptance of the grant from the Riverview Foundation, and that's all I have.
What grant was that?
It's for the, it's for a GIS inventory
Oh, yeah.
of certain features, and
That's a very generous organization.
Yes, it is. They've been very good to Athens-Clark County.
Does the auditor have a report?
No, sir.
How about you, Mr. Attorney?
No, thank you.
Right. So with that, we'll have Commission comments, and we'll start with Commissioner Denson.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So first, I just want to, as always, say thank you for all the citizens who came and gave us public comment tonight. It's important that that happens, and I really appreciate it. I know the rest of us behind the rail do also. And I'll briefly speak to the settlement situation. I think this has been one of the hardest, it's definitely the hardest decision that I've had put before me, and I think that probably a lot of us back here agree on this. I personally couldn't support it, but I understand why the commissioners who voted did. And, but I would like to see us explore in those kind of situations, maybe to maximize the amount of transparency we can legally have. I think Commissioner Parker brings up some good points with that. Beyond that, there's, there was one item that's normally on the agenda that I did not see, and I did not notice it until tonight, but normally there's, there's an item, I think it's under the manager's report of contract awards in excess of $10,000. Were there no contract awards this time, or was it just left off the agenda for?
I noted that, too, and I actually called the clerk about that, and they did not receive the report in time. So what will happen is they'll double up next month.
Okay.
But there will be no missing reports from the manager's office.
That's great to hear. I assumed it was something like that, but I think that, and this is just for the public, I, whenever I was simply a constituent, and still as a commissioner, I've always found that report very helpful, and it kind of is, it's one of the ways you can keep abreast of what's going on, and the kind of government gives you a little insight there. So I appreciate that. That'll be on next month. And I guess I'll also end with just thanking my wife, who might be watching right now, for letting me spend my anniversary night here.
Happy anniversary.
Yeah, she's fantastic.
We're getting down early. Okay, hurry up.
Commissioner Edwards.
We're already here too late.
Commissioner Edwards passed. Commissioner Thornton?
Oh, I just want to let Michael Smith know the auditor meeting is tomorrow at, what time?
5:30.
5:30. So, yeah, we're rolling. And congratulations, Maddox family.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just wanted to comment briefly on the Riverview Foundation and the impact that they've had on Athens. They haven't, you know, it's been, they haven't been, they've been involved in Athens for a while, but not as long as, you know, some of us on the commission app. But, you know, just looking through and thinking about the Riverview Foundation and the impact they've had, I mean, they've given to organizations like Newchi Space, Boulevard Woods, they helped out quite a bit with Boulevard Woods, Talassee Forest, they helped out with that, Books for Keeps, Firefly Trail, they paid for a bridge at Southeast Clark Park. And they also paid, helped fund a nonprofit professorship in Dr. Tom Holland's name. And some of you may know Dr. Holland and Myra Blackman, they used to live in Holly Hills. Now they live in Washington, Georgia. Very good, very good citizens of Athens. And, but I guess I say, and Lake Herick, Books for Keeps. I guess I say all this because they, they help us in areas where we need help the most, and it's very much appreciated when, when Riverview Foundation is able to do that for us. So it did.
We can add Beach Haven to that list, too.
Do, I'm sorry?
We can add Beach Haven to that list, too.
Beach Haven as well, yeah. So, so as new commissioners, you'll see Riverview Foundation is involved in a lot, and hopefully will still continue to be involved in a lot. The second thing I wanted to mention is, this got brought up at our retreat, about the Epsbridge Corridor study. And I have talked to Professor Crowley, and we're working on some public input sessions for that. So that should perhaps be before the mayor and commission, July, August, maybe, at the latest, I think. So, just for acceptance, probably, from that standpoint. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Oh, I want to spend an hour and a half talking about, obviously.
Next.
I will leave.
Yeah, we'll turn the cameras off.
Let's read the Bible to everybody. I have nothing.
Well, I don't think it's acceptable in the case of settling in the way that we have, for there not to be at least the transparency of having it known to the public in advance. If the decision was made on Friday, we submit all of our commission documents, our CDOs and whatnot, by Friday. And so the public should have had sufficient notice that this was happening to come and speak their grievances to us. When we make hard decisions, they, they are hard decisions, but they should, but we should have to make them in the face of the community that is impacted by them. As well, I'd like to note that we have not yet, or the mayor has not yet, I guess, put out his statement, because I have not seen it, which actually is great, because that gives opportunity for you all to contact him regarding what you think the community needs in order to heal from some of the traumas they may have incurred as a result of this incident. So I look forward to giving him some feedback. I will hope to see an outline of the plan forward for us as a commission and as a government, to ensure that the people that you all mentioned feel a little uncomfortable about the situation still, get what they need to move forward, and I invite others to do the same.
I look forward to the release of the statement. We did get a draft of that statement emailed to us today, and hopefully that will satisfy some in the community. There, you know, there's certainly a degree of confidentiality when it comes to any settlement, so that's important for folks to know. I also want to point out that we did have an audit committee meeting on February 13, and we are having another one tomorrow. Typically, these occur once a month, but we bumped ours up a week because we were conflicting with spring break. So instead of putting it off, we decided to move it up. So we will be having some discussions about possible future audits, and the public is welcome to come to that meeting. It's at 5:30 in the upstairs conference room, and we look forward to a vigorous work plan for the coming year.
Okay. I'll just grab the, well, first of all, I want to congratulate the Jenny L. Maddox family. We've had a long journey. I'm just, and since you guys are still here, I wanted to make sure that you knew how excited I am for you as well, and the community, and look forward to that, and that work order. I think that will probably happen fairly quickly.
Yeah.
The changing, because we make those signs in-house, I think. And then I will pick up on the scooter topic, because that is in Legislative Review Committee. We've been studying motorized vehicles since March, starting with golf carts. And then by August, we quickly went to e-scooters, and that's where our focus is right now. Our next meeting, because March's schedule's moved around a little bit, as Commissioner Link brought up, LRC is going to be 4:30 on March 27, upstairs, probably downstairs conference room, since we're the only meeting at that time. But it'll be on the calendar, on the website, and we'll be talking about moving forward. And part of moving forward, if we could get people's outreach, we have a House Bill 454. Spencer Frye is one of the sponsors of that, and he has his own ideas about motorized mobility devices and electronic personal assistance mobility devices. I think in his, he might even mention that they shouldn't be very close to bus stops, which I think is a little bit conflicting with what we were thinking about how we would like them to be convenient for our transit riders. So I've reached out to him to give him some feedback, and I think that he would welcome hearing our community's feedback on that, since we do have some experience. And then our Senator Frank Gin has House Senate Bill 159. I haven't had a chance to read that one, but I welcome everybody looking into that, because as we move forward in our local legislative review, we need to be aware of what's happening at the state to make sure that we can indeed proceed with the ideas that we feel are good for our community. And so I hope everybody will add that to the many things that we want feedback about and that we need to speak to. And with that, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second, second call in favor?